One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Jessica, would you welcome, please?
Councilmember Frankel?
Here.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Farley?
Here.
Councilmember Osborne?
May I give a question or excuse, please?
How's that getting in?
All papers say aye.
Aye.
Pose a name. Pass.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Thank you, Jessica. My presentation from Metro Animal Services.
Well, they're getting ready. This is at the council's request. Chief Marky and his right-hand person, Mark, are gonna be here to give you a presentation. I'll let him take it away.
Are they gonna be able to hear them without a mic?
Yeah. I'm watching the sound.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for having us tonight. It's my privilege to be the police chief and senator, but it's equally my privilege to also be the director of Metro Animal Services, which, as I explained tonight, is your and our regional animal care and control agency. Also, with me is Mark Freely, he's our support services manager. His job is to directly oversee that program. So with that, we'll get into the next slide. Tonight's is gonna be just an overview. I mean, COVID killed our people skills, right? I mean, we weren't interacting like we normally would, and so I think there was a lot of a lot of detrimental effects, but one of them was not getting out to our partners and sharing information. And so, we offered to come out and give you these presentations. So we're here for any information or questions you may have. We'll talk a little bit about what is Metro Animal Services, our enforcement, licensing, shelter. Those are our primary duties that we do, and then how we're funded, and then some answers to questions you may have. So, kinda how we started, right? City Senator, City of Puyallup had a jail, City of Senator had a shelter. And so, we started with people's pets for prisoners, you know, as a partnership with City of Puyallup and Senator. And then, we ran the shelter. They accepted our prisoners for housing and care. Then, in two thousand and four, the Pierce County Humane Society ended any animal control enforcement. Just were in the sheltering business. So that forced a lot of other cities to go out and still get help from a partner, or at least start their own programs. Larger cities like Tacoma, Pierce County, they formed their own, others formed partners. So that's when Edgewood and Monty Lake joined us, and we ended the Pets for Prisoners kind of program and actually formed the Metro Animal Services. And in two thousand and nine, the City of Milton joined us. And then, after reorganization in King County, both City of Pacific and Algonia joined us in two thousand and five. So the next slide shows kind of all the areas of the cities that we cover. Algonia, Monty Lake, Edgewood, Milton, Pacific, Senator, and Puyallup. And that's quite a big geographic area. It's actually in seven cities, comprises a population of about a hundred and nine thousand eight hundred residents. That's April twenty twenty-two, all I've got numbers. About forty-three square miles. And then, the American Veterinary Medical Association comes up with a formula. That's the cat doing the math there. What to estimate pets per household park. So, estimated roughly around twenty-seven thousand dogs, twenty-five hundred cats, twenty-five hundred birds. I know some of which was in Algonia, and six hundred bigger ones. That's quite a bit. And as you go on, you'll see this is all done with three animal control officers, two shelter assistants, kennel tech, and a whole bunch of volunteers. You just couldn't handle that. So, the next part, I'll invite Mark to talk about enforcement, our ACOs, and sort of the calls.
Good evening, everybody. Well, our main thing is our dog, they're not dog catchers. Our animal control officers are not like they're depicted in the cartoons and things like that. I think that will catch out the, they can be advanced. There we go. But they are highly trained enforcement officers, partially mentioned, I guess is what they consider them, so. So, as the chief mentioned, we've got three animal control officers. One of those is our supervisor in charge of everybody at Pet and Shelter itself. They're the authority police officers. Go through a pretty rigorous background because they are summer police employees, so they go through a regular background, just like a police officer would with you know, polygraph, and site, and all that stuff. They also have a two-week academy of, or yeah, of animal control vocabulary of the Criminal Justice Training Center. And then, of course, there is, you know, ongoing training through what's called WACA, which is Washington Animal Control Association, and NACA, which is the National Animal Control Association. So, NACA, WACA. There's a lot of training for those, and some other organizations offer training too. So, we're pretty big on training, keeping up to date on that. And there's some of the calls. Mostly, you know, we respond to a lot of dogs at large. And parking complaints are kind of the big, you know, major ones that we respond to quite often. But we do, you know, handle animal abuse and cruelty calls in cases, and our officers will, you know, they do reports and everything. They go to court to testify and bring all the information as well. So, again, just like a police officer, but they're pretty important for following through on cases. We just recently changed our hours for the shelter and, well, just for the shelter. We started opening on Mondays. It were closed Sunday and Monday, but we hired, well, I'll go to the, we'll go to the next slide and kind of explain when we go to staffing a little bit.
It was hard to see from that last picture, but that's actually
Oh, yeah.
It's a possum stuck in the drain of our escape park.
It's like a slatter. I was talking, I saw the west by a cradle. It's actually just a possum in a debris in a pool down the bottom there. He's kind of saying, blend any in there, so. All right. So, potentially dangerous dog and dangerous dog are declarations that our officers can declare animals. There's different, you know, categories to those, or air courtesy degrees to those. But our officers go through the whole, it's quite a process. And of course, it's outlined in your municipal code as well. And there is an appeal process for them to present their case in an appeal. A lot of times, before it even goes to court, they can, you know, have another person sit in the room and hear their side of the story, so. And then the officers, we'll do follow-up after the declarations to make sure everybody's reading all the admissions. A little bit of information about A D D and B D, what it costs. Some, you know, people will, once they're declared, they will go through, be a family member, even though they're potentially dangerous, dangerous. It's intensive, but they, that is an option. And there you can see the initial annual fees. They have to have liability depending on which category they fall in. Obviously, the climate and, you know, as it progresses to dangerous, there are even a few more mandatory things they have to. So it's quite a, quite a process. And we monitor that, make sure they keep up current every year, renew those licenses, and make sure their insurance is still there. They didn't just buy it and cancel it. Anytime you have questions, you can feel free to. There's some twenty twenty-two statistics, and I printed out some that are just specific for Algonia here, and I'll hand those out in just a bit. But that's just kind of gives you a rough idea of what, just Algonia. But this is total.
What are ex-patrols?
So, ex-patrols, when they're on downtime, when officers are in downtime, not, you know, on calls or writing a report and things, they go out, they drive around in each of our cities and just kind of see if there's any dogs, and so they take it more proactive. And they don't get to do that a lot. We've been kind of, with COVID, and our staffing, you know, we've got some people, new peoples, a lot of people left and head higher. So, there's not, you know, a lot of opportunity, but we're fully staffed now, so we'll see those members go up. But, yeah, it's just so they can drive around and be a little proactive rather than just responding to calls. Okay. And those are, like, total. I'll track where we're working. So there are the total stats, side by side with other cities, just so you can get an idea of how, uh, stands with those others.
Why are there no citations?
A lot of times, they can handle those with fractions and written citations are probably more, what they don't seem to get to handle. Need a little more attention, so we can try to get them, you know, our main thing is educating folks, of course, but sometimes the warning, written warnings don't work, so we'll get a fraction, and then we can do a citation.
If more egregious cases are charged, usually directly by the prosecutor. So, whether it's a felony animal cruelty case, or it's a city one, like Puyallup, they'd rather than have the officer write a citation, they'd refer it to the prosecutor's office and they review and charge it. Call for service. That's when a citizen calls requesting services from the patrol service. They have revisited and analyzed that the, you know, every time we, because we're based on per capita, is how this program is funded, is in practice. And I look at the level of activity versus population, and there's pretty much a direct, you know, correlation. But I think it's still probably by far the fairest way to approach the cost of the program. And I will say too, that one of the adverse impacts of COVID was, we did see decreased, obviously, activity at the shelter. We had to close our doors, maybe like a non-need for redemption and stuff like that, so. But the first quarter, we've, since we've fully opened, we've seen, I mean, drastic increases. Trent gets the quarterly reports, and we've seen dramatic, things are coming back to normal by the end. And actually, also what we're seeing, I think, is during the work from home and the COVID, it was desirable for a lot of people to acquire new pets because they're at home, and now we're kind of seeing surrender of more pets, because it's now the back, the workplace, the person. We'll see how that trend continues to bear out. And then, a couple of things that we do as a proactive measure, besides the dedicated patrols, so they call out, because we want to be able to track our stakeholders, you know, their you know, Mark's a council member in A D D, it's one of them, and he has sewers, you know, and he hears from, he says, I never see your trucks, I never see your Well, we can actually go back and say, well, we do spend time in Edgewood, other than just responding to and from the calls. And another thing we do is the temp license, the very bottom. So if we encounter an animal on a call that's not licensed, we give them, the animal patrol officer has a temporary license, and here we go. So within thirty days, you can follow up, go to City Hall in Algonia, or go online, or whatever, versus, rather than taking enforcement. Now, if they don't, after that thirty days, they have to show that the animal's been relocated, or it's a non-need for not licensed. So we found that to be a fairly effective tool to promote licensing in these cities, both for pet renification and help supporting programs. Which is the very next slide, it's talking about licensing.
I gotta go to a question. We're about to talk about licenses, is my fault, right? I know several years ago, if not a couple of decades ago, when it was under King County Animal Control, they actually had like a volunteer program where they give retirees a clipboard, walk the cities, knock on doors. It's quite effective. Say, you got any animals in here? Are they licensed? One time, the dog people are on us, and they're signing up right there. And others can just pass them off to the city, but I'm just curious if this, is this a program like that?
So, we have, we rely actually on, this is in real, it goes to have an impact, on each of the cities to promote licensing. Whether that's, you know, something in the power bill, something in your e-news, something in your, you know, your citizens newsletters to really promote licensing in your jurisdiction. There's a direct benefit to the city in, by helping fund the program through that, what we call, unsheltered revenue. It reduces the amount the city has to pay for the cost. And puts the cost of pet control with pet owners, is kind of the thing. And we also just recently did a comparison of all seven jurisdictions to see where our license rates fall in comparison to other copper rolls or neighboring jurisdictions and other, with the exception of Puyallup that was low, that January this year increased their amount. We're all pretty much on par with our viewers and our neighbors. So it's not unfair, it's not, you know, it's reasonable, but it's extremely important to the program, you know, it's like, they were checking the dog's ID. Cute picture. But for reuничation, of course, microchipping is very popular now as a means of identification. Every pet that goes out Metro Services doors gets microchipped. It's a, it's a requirement to do microchip. Clinics, it's funded by our nonprofit, The Famous, and they subsidize and they pay for the numbers, so. We really want to promote that. Yep?
I just want to mention, I will go out occasionally too when it's a little nicer weather, and I've driven around in cities for a while, or walked them, actually, walked out lots of them, this is for Dallas parking, or, you know, signs and things, so, I guess I'm that qualitative. But I've been known to do that, to just kind of familiarize myself with the jurisdictions that my officers, of course, are taking care of, but also to help out and get those licenses out there. But they jump in too. We have a nice partnership with Auburn Valley Committee. And if they adopt out or release, you know, for instance, King County picks up an animal that belongs to the resident, or owner, for whatever reason, Auburn Valley Committee will give us a list at the end of the month of people in our jurisdiction that have either adopted out. I'll send a little postcard letting them know, I mean, congratulations, it's time to license your pets, so. Kind of, you know, do a proactive value.
That is so that the door will door. I know one jurisdiction in Washington got trouble. They were using marketing, people would buy pet food with membership cards, and then send them evidence. A little bit too much privacy protection. A little bit about our shelter. It's located up on Puyallup South Hill, right, pretty much across from Pierce College on thirty-ninth Southeast. It's an existing facility that the City of Puyallup owns that provides the program their cost. As well as it covers all maintenance, other than our garbage, and our bones, and the alarm, and they provide all maintenance. Water sewer, electricity, everything's covered. That's fairly convenient. It might be a little bit more of a commune for your citizens, but it's pretty easily accessible. And the next slide, some of the numbers about the kennels. We've got sixteen dog enclosures, forty-six small animal or cat kennels. A lot of those have been recently upgraded with, we've got different grants from ASPCA, and put pet portals, like you go from one to the other. So, last year, we're seeing already some spikes, about mid-two thousand twenty-two, from our two thousand twenty-one numbers, was served seventeen thousand four hundred customers. One hundred people actually went to the shelter in person, and the others were served by dog. Took in about a thousand animals. Of those, about four hundred, and some were drop-offs by the public. If they only willingly accept them if they're from a partner city. And then, the balance was either transferred, or like they were dropped off at Humane Society in Tacoma, or Auburn Valley. We have partnerships with all those. We, we are not gonna necessarily turn somebody away, because we can have Humane Society kind of get theirs. But the rest were actually from out in the field, from our ACOs. And then, as far as our outcomes, three hundred and thirty-four pets were adopted to the new forever families. Three hundred and ninety-two were transferred out, and that's usually to rescue organizations or other humane societies. Some cats, despite their very nature, particularly girl cats, are not amenable to adoption, but they have other uses and places in the society. And so, we have numerous partnerships with rescues to keep our kill rate down. We don't ever have to euthanize for space issues, only for health issues. Hundred fifty-six were returned to owner. That, that was a little bit low, so. They didn't want them back, or it was, or not knowing what, where the source. We post, you know, all our pets online instantly when they're brought into the facility. So, and Pierce County Humane Society has us listed as a shelter on their website, so somebody that was missing a pet could easily reach out. And that's what a lot of those phone calls are. And then, we had, unfortunately, euthanized some of the pets that were in our various facilities. And we track that all very specifically. Our facility is licensed through the Department of Health, and all our ACOs are trained in that. Youth and all of some is a regulated control substance, so we keep very, very meticulous records on that. And I talked about the volunteers. We absolutely, these people do it because they just love pets, and we could not do it without them. We're probably around, what, forty, forty-eight volunteers. Last year, they donated collectively five thousand seven hundred and forty dollars, which, based on IRS value of it, comes out to the saving account of one hundred, right? But the bottom line is, we could not do it, exercise all those pets, arrange adoptions, clean, not with the, the mix down. They're, they're an asset, and they really inform the family up there. They all get along. Some come and go, they're maybe going to school, and then they're gonna move on after college, because Pierce College has a vet, pet program. We get a steady stream, but these folks, some of them donated over five thousand dollars. So, Mark, to talk about our adoption programs.
So, as you can see there, we're at a pretty decent price for adopting cats and dogs. As the chief mentioned there, you can see the microchip is included in that, and all its, the mass scenes and spaying, and a license too, if they're in our jurisdiction and Pierce County. That's included in that as well.
So is the recollection for all owners of the scent?
No.
As a two fifty-plus stamp here.
Yeah, it's just for all, for anybody to adopt. It's the same, no matter where you live, even outside our jurisdiction, you can still adopt that same. Okay, and then the cats also have to be tested for, you know, kidney and AIDS, so usually our spay here providers will take care of that testing when we do the spaying. Because we do not have a vet hog staff, so we do have that, more of less spay, or Krista, and a couple of vets on hand to do that too. And as the chief said too, you can go on our website, and you can see right away who's available, and, you know, they come right off of there as soon as they're adopted, and as soon as they're available, we put on there, so.
We can tell you have lots of kittens.
Yes. We've had all kinds of things too. You know, we had kitty pigs here recently, for some reason. We've had some other exotic animals. We had a tarantula that had been found from most elephants in Senator. Anyway. There, there's our website. If you go there anytime you need a kitty fix or a puppy fix, you can check out some pictures there. And we're also on Facebook, and they do post when we, you know, take in a, you know, stray animal, we do post on there too, so people can check and tail. There's, we're good with that. We also, a lot of work with the community, and you can see all the different things here. My days is one of them, we've been out before, and we're able to, with staffing, and arguing, but if you like, if you know, so we get the word out to folks, and our, our folks from Famous also have a good word day, get information on the folks at these events.
And the budget, and then we wrap it up. So, our biennial budget for, then we break out the shelter expense and enforcement, so we can have a benefit of tracking where our costs are and where our revenues best offset our costs. So, the total combined is twenty-one twenty-two. That is actual. I think the, the amount, a lot of that accounted for like one and five, so ended up two oh five, plus seven, two hundred and five dollars. So that's the actual, or twenty-one twenty-two expenditure, a million three five seven, five dollars. Obviously, just like the city here, the majority of that, we've given them inside as staff, right, as staff benefits. Our professional services, that's probably where we're seeing the biggest expense challenge right now, because who would have thought, there's a veterinary shortage, you know, if you all tried to sever schedule, bed one for your vendor. It's getting off the hook, and when we put out our last request for veterinary services, one, we had very little response, two, they've increased their prices. So that's, that's moving forward, to be completely honest, that is a challenge for us, in keeping this cost effective. Replacement funds is our, for fleet reserve, we program those trucks out. The chassis, they're all on four chassis for the custom box, is, we have one due for replacement, just the box alone would be close to a hundred thousand. It was unbelievable, and that's from a manufacturer, and all, our, so we postponed that, so we can, every year, we set aside money to replace. This will put in a year budget, and also IT needs, like laptops and radios, they use our dispatch center, Pierce County, South Southern. So that's kind of a major, major cost. So we don't pay rent for utilities, we just have basic operating costs. We do spend a lot of mail, the, for renewals of licenses, and all the other software licenses that is run business, so. Our major revenue sources are, all our partner cities base per capita, a hundred and nine thousand population. Our license sales, our pet license sales, and then our shelter fees. So there's a redemption fee if a dog gets caught, which is four hundred and fifty. There's a daily order fee, and these are fees that are not uncommon at any other shelter. And then, donations and grants. We occasionally will get some beneficiary donations. We get occasional donations on our website. They can make a donation when they adopt. And then, we do, we, our volunteers do fun little drives, like King County, they, you know, buy a shank about like koozie niggas, it cost us a buck and a half, and, and for a ten-dollar donation. So it's just stuff like that, just to, just to help offset the pretty expenses. Next slide shows, just to break down, so I can give you exact numbers if you like. Just, you'll shock that the majority of the expenditures, reporters goes towards our staff benefits and the reserve funds. And the next one is our revenue, where it comes from. Again, that base per capita is the, the main, the license fees, and then the shelter fees. And donations is a small portion of that. And so, our twenty twenty-three, on the next slide is our twenty twenty-three funding. So, the base per capita is six dollars. And then, what we call the non-ship, the, the non-shelter revenue, which is pet license, based on that, estimate of pets per population. That's the next one, is two thirty-five on top of that. So it's eight dollars, twenty-five, eight dollars and thirty-five cents per resident in City of Algonia, continuing to operate and contract Metro Animal Services. Now, the, the benefit I mentioned earlier of the license sales is that license, that non-shelter per capita, which is the pet license. If, last year, we had three cities that sold more than what their allocation was. So that is a credit against their, the number one, the base per capita fee. So the first quarter in January, it was reconciled, which, and then they, they got that credit in towards the next quarter. Because, as an animal Because as an enterprise fund, our council, it would, it has to. Revenue has to exceed expenditures, we can't run it in a minute. How it pans out in, in the year, the cash, you know, any cash, any cash, no different than any of the accounts you all accrued. Anyway, we do that reconciliation at the end of the year. The billing for, for capita is, is every month. And we'll do your, from our findings, part of yours. And then per capita is just reconciled, total license sold in the year. Either met it or you didn't. If you met it, you get a, or exceeded it, you get a refund towards your city per capita. If you didn't, then we say, hey, guess what, I'll loan you those thirty-nine, or whatever, in short form. So what makes us different as far as RAS, right? King County's animal control, really is that, that's not, right? Is that, you know, having our own shelter and having our operations board. We decide the level of service, right? We as all the partners, you know, every community's unique, every community's got issues, you know? And those issues are gonna change over the years. Seeing a spike in animal attacks, pit bulls and other, some, some unhuman. There was a dog attack up in Edwood, we killed like thirty-five waterfowl, you know? But we can be personable, we run, we control the level of service that I think all of our citizens, some are still smart, right? And our citizens have come to enjoy a level of service. And I think that by operating it as a regional resource, we can contribute that. We can get involved in the community events. You know, by having a shelter, the, the revenue, the revenue came in just, all the revenue total, obviously, that's balance. It was in just over what our expenses were. So we're, should be about two hundred thousand in, in the black, which is good. It was for several years there, especially during the nine-ten recession, that, that wasn't the case, whatever it was. We have our joint operations board, which is all the chiefs or the designees of all the seven cities that participate in the every quarter. We review all the statistics, we talk, we review, that is the budget, no secret shots, no, right? We encourage them to share that with their council or, or their city managers, whatever the case may be, experts. Just to, so everybody's informed, I'm very candid about any challenges we're facing. We just recently hired a couple new, possibly a long-term employee that retired after twenty-one years. And for severance of I help, was an unanticipated, uh, big hit to the miserable budget. So I always like to make sure everybody's aware of those kinds of situations. Do you have any questions?
I'd like to make a comment. Mark, please tell your folks thank you. I received a letter not too long ago from a, a local family that had roosters. And our laws are like your laws, we don't allow roosters in the city. And your person came by and nicely explained to them. And those people wrote me a letter and I replied that, no, we don't allow roosters per code. But please tell them thank you, the way they handled it was very professional. And we see your trucks, or I know I do, see your trucks, they're too big areas, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I got it. First of all, thank you. Comment, I know it's very interesting and for the hundreds of people that are online right now, they appreciate that as well. I just want to get back to that licensing fee again. I noticed in parentheses, it said Metro and PC. Metro is all the partners.
Yeah, Metro, Metro Home Services, sorry.
So the license fee becomes for Algonah in that.
Yeah, yeah, and PC is Pierce County. So if a Pierce County resident adopts a dog or cat or a game pig or a rare wild dog. That requires by code and to have a license in Pierce County, we sell it at our shelter, retain the rest, the revenue. And then Pierce County will just handle the renewals. So it's a partnership we have set up. Because being on the edge of, you know, that whole South Carolina program, we get a lot of folks from unincorporated Pierce County.
Thank you, that is good.
So Harry has all the questions as well. I noticed you on the PowerPoint, thank you. It listed an emergency twenty-four seven service. How does that work?
So we con, we contract with Senator Vet Hospital, which is on the same, Senator. They're twenty-four seven, uh, emergency veterinary hospital. We contract with them annually per drop. So if it's after hours and it doesn't require immediate animal control officer response over time, then our dispatchers and, and I know because this came up recently with Ballacom with a civic resident. They are directed to, when they call, because we have two different call receiving centers for our cities. They're instructed to, if they're able to foster the vet until the next day. Or they can drop it off at Senator Animal Hospital, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Or if maybe, and they're not comfortable with any of those options, then we can dispatch the animal control officer.
So in that, this is my next question. What happens, since we've had a larger number of loose dogs, that's been brought up by some of our residents? What do you recommend that they do? Should they be approaching the dogs and away? Because typically if they call by the time someone gets there, the dogs know where to be found.
Yeah, it's gonna depend on a number of factors. One, that citizen's comfortable, the dog's behavior, demeanor. But the absolute true thing is to call the police. Uh, if it's after hours, most likely, Chief Schringer's staff is gonna hit a call to check the area. Right, to avoid a, an aesthetic call out. If the dog's located, or the, the animal's located, then we can, again, have the doctor drop it off or have me see it. As far as, you know, everyone's gonna have their own comfortable dealing with, who's there and for whom. Anything else? Well, I want to thank you for what you do for your community. And I know sometimes at times it can be a thankless job. And, you know, you don't all do it for the pain. And like I said, Mark can sympathize, he's been on the Edward, uh, Edward City Council, uh, for on his second term. So we're approachable, we're here for you, your partners will be. So anytime you need something, don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you very much, Jake. Thank you all for coming in.
So I'm making, or should we approve the agenda?
I'll second.
In a motion, second, to approve the agenda, is there any questions? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say aye.
Mark passed.
We've been closer to him, we've got the senator, did he?
I'll second it.
Everybody gotta look at that. Any questions? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say aye. Pass. Reports. President, do you have a report?
I do not have any reports.
Could?
I do, thank you, uh, I attended the Easter egg hunt on Saturday, it was great. We had a large number of participants, it was really good. I just wanna, you know, shout out to the Easter bunny who was showing up and was there. The public works team was there, we had the, Mariano and Matt, we had city staff. The mayor, Jessica, Dana and Gary were there. Also Sergeant Acante and Officer Reed were there, sharing with the crowds and handing out badges and stuff. We also had a lot of volunteers from community members, including some kids and some folks from the YMCA. So I thought it went very well. Was very happy to see everybody that was there. I think it was much bigger than last year.
Yeah, I was, I was absolutely surprised when I drove, because I left a little early and I drove out in near Park, Cogwell. And Milwaukee out there and near Park there, with a park across the way. And there was a lot of people here, so.
I mean, most of us are ready, it just started to be soon right at the end, so couldn't have planned that better. Uh, that's all I have there.
Tim?
I have nothing.
Mr. Bill?
Out of respect for time, I'll keep my version short. I have nothing.
Thank you. Russ, Public Works?
Yeah, Public Works, we've opened up the park bathrooms. We had to do some repair, we installed a toilet and a urinal. And those, so those are open and cleaned and they got those ready for, before the Easter egg hunt stuff too, so. We are doing some, continuing some cross-training on the Flail Muller. So they got Dean and Damian working on, on that cross-training. So they're doing the blackberry bushes and knocking down weeds on the trails and stuff. And then just basically checking storm waters and debris and stuff like that. They, they do that weekly. We are gonna start, uh, replacing some stormwater pipe and stuff. We, we kinda did a little bit of an assessment with the camera system that we have. So first, we start, we made a list that started, you know, replacing some pipe that needs to be just. It's either full or it's deteriorated to where it's just time to replace it. So we'll start doing those a little bit every year, depending as we go along. We did have no water leaks last two weeks, so that's a, a good note, so. And I think that's all I have, unless you've got questions for me.
I learned something this week from, from Russell. We have twenty-one point nine miles worth of roads, streets.
That's correct.
In our little two point two square mile town. I thought that was an inter, interesting fact, I hope you didn't add.
Yeah.
We have, Chief Schringer?
All right, so I'll start with the police department. As of last Thursday, I made two conditional offers of employment. Both have been through the academy, both accepted. Their start date for here will be April seventeenth, pending a clean background, polygraph and psych. They've had the polygraph, the psych, and we're just waiting on the background to finish up. The background investigator was here today. But for budget planning purposes wise, my longtime background investigator decided to retire. Got tired of, and taxes were killing him. And so I had to go out and scramble, find a new one, obviously not for the same prices as I was getting. So it's, it's gonna be a little bit more expensive. So you'll probably see a request for a budget amendment from me in May, and that'll be one of the items that'll be on it. The other thing, we had, uh, so we had our monthly roll call. One of the things I'm doing is holding an all-hands roll call, so they hear things straight from the chief. Once a month, the mayor was our guest, I do that, I go over policy. That was, we had our second, third one, very successful. Next week, we went over, we're gonna all be at the range doing our lesson little train, those kind of things. It's a requirement, we do it every year. From the city administrator side, I'll start today and work backwards. Today, I met with Auburn IT over some few security issues. Again, another thing for a budget amendment. There's now a requirement for local jurisdictions to have a couple of things. And that, the biggest one being intrusion software, not just virus protection, but if someone's actually trying to hack your system, we have to have intrusion software. So we are currently out getting bids. When I say we, IT is currently out getting bids on what that looks like. The other thing that will be coming in twenty twenty-four is two, uh, two type authentication for your computers. So like me, I've been using it for a couple of years. I'm the only one in the city, because I don't like motion. So, but it's called, I, you know, where you have an app on your phone, when you log on, it pops up, is this you? Yes, and then do it, that's correct. So I, I didn't want to get too techy, but yes, that's the app. So look for that, we'll be pulling those in toward the end of the year, getting them all on your computer and your, uh, you know, it's gonna be a little nuanced with you guys, because you guys don't have city cell phones. How are we gonna do that? So that's a question for IT, how we're gonna work council members, so.
Those are pushing notifications for, uh, untimed.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, exactly. So some of the changes that had to happen, should have took, though, there, there was an update pushed out, it closed the business today. So if you log into your computer and it shuts down after thirty minutes and no use, my apologies, that's now a recording. So, anyway, uh, last week, on Thursday, I lost my train of thought. As a city administrator, let's go Friday. Friday, I was down in Olympia for the city of Algonah. I met with Christina Reeves and Jamila Taylor, our two representatives. And just so the council's clear, we went after capital funds to start construction on the Wetlands Park. The final budget came out, we have six hundred thousand in this budget. It is the intent of all three of our legislators to go after the remainder of the funds in the supplementary budget for next year. But as it stands now, pending final passage, we have six hundred thousand in the budget for, to start construction on our Wetlands Park. That being said, I spoke to you guys briefly during the study session. There may be an executive session about a park-related issue. That, this will tie into it and will make sense once we have that executive session. That being said, I'm really looking forward to getting those funds and starting construction. The last week, talked about it as a group, that would start sometime in late summer, if we got the funding this year. And so we can move forward. So really looking forward to that. If you haven't seen the plans for the walkway, the updated plans, get with Ms. Jessica, she has a copy of them. And I will be glad to share those with you. We are in the process of re, uh, some negotiations with the union over positions, uh, the Public Works Unit. Union is our intent to refund the permit tech, but add to their duties code enforcement. So it'd be a code enforcement slash permit tech person. And so we're, obviously it's a change in working conditions, because we're adding more duties. So Ms. Jessica's the point person for that, she is handling those negotiations. But I just wanted to make you guys aware that they're currently going on. The last thing I'll talk about, and it goes back to the budget amendment. The salary commission does not include the mayor's salary, as a review. I had Zach look into this. However, the mayor's expressed, uh, that he does not want city insurance. So we are going, the money that we have allocated for his city insurance, we are going to reallocate in the form of a salary. And that will also be coming to you, whatever's left remaining on the insurance. Because it's already money budget, and that will be coming to you in the budget amendment as well. The last thing on the budget amendment, in preparation for Algonah Village and all those things, I'm trying to build some professional development over at the police department. Kari is doing the job too. As those of you that were on the council when I took over as acting city administrator, I unfunded my other specialist position. When Jessica was promoted, I, I am at the point where she's, she's overworked. And so what I would like to do is, I have spoken to the mayor, is in that budget amendment, refund that position. And I have talked into Tara, we've developed a plan to make sure it's funded and we live within our means. And I'll be presenting that to you at that time, so. Uh, other than that, I'll stand for any questions? Yes, sir.
There is a Nibble White box man parked up First Avenue, just west of. Seattle Boulevard, spent there for like two months.
On your side of the street?
Yeah, you can't see around it.
I know who it is. So it's the people on the other side of I do that use their parking lot, or their back driveway for excess cars from their parking lot, or from their car lot and tent. And so we've, we've sighted them on a regular basis, but that's theirs.
I checked the code on that chief, and is that a, it says on First Avenue, can you, you can park on First Avenue, is that correct?
No.
No, that's not it.
No. So just to remember, when you check the code, we've adopted by reference, the model traffic code. And section twelve of the model traffic code gives you regulations on parking within the city.
I just don't have the food, other than when Comcast or whoever came in and put in, um, yeah, they're gonna do blocks in there with, I don't know if it's fiber optics or something. They moved for one day and I go, God, I can see, I can make the turn now, and then the next angle's back.
I'll pass it along to the troops. We'll get it moved. It'll probably be marked before we leave this meeting.
Any update on the, moving down with the Filipino home seat?
Yes, we had a very productive meeting. That's what we did Thursday. Thank you for sparing my memory. So, um, first off, as you guys know, I, I committed to shutting down them, you know, suspending their business license. Well, guess what? They never had a business license. So. They've never had a business license. So, we met with them on Thursday. This kid's good. They met, it's happy. They, we met with them on Thursday. They agreed they need a business license. We said we would give them a business license if they applied. However, there would be conditions. Condition number one, no event goes past ten PM. And those events, the gate has to be, when I mean past ten PM, and the mayor was present in this meeting as well, and so is Jessica. The gate is closed at ten PM. Made that very clear. They, meaning the Filipino hall, will hire security and not the, require the renters to hire security. They will have to have somebody on staff at the Filipino hall to start and finish. And, uh, and we would agree to quarterly meetings. So after I met with them on Thursday at three PM, I met with the lady that came in. Let me back up for a minute. They came with, hey, hat in hand, basically, and said, hey, these are the things, we were right, we're in the wrong here. And we wanna make, we wanna be good neighbors. And they came with a list of things that they plan on doing in the future. To include, they agreed to limiting the events to earlier in the evening. That being said, there's a list open that's gonna take some time to play out. That's on them. They wanna continue to do that. But the requirements we're putting on their business license are, hey, no vent after ten PM, they hire security. Go about it. That, fast forward to three PM, I met with Ms. Coggins and explained what had happened earlier in the day. I shared with her their commitment, excuse me. And the last thing that the Filipino hall agreed to is having quarterly meetings with the city. I've invited the neighborhood to be part of those quarterly meetings. And that's gonna be one of the conditions of their business permit, that we check in every quarter and we talk about what's going on at Filipino hall. And I think it's very important to get representation from the neighborhood as well. So thank you, Councilmember Cook. I drew a blank, but yes, that was a busy Thursday last week. Uh, I wanna say that everybody left those meetings and, and feeling good. Councilmember, or, excuse me, Ms. Coggins responded with an email thinking that those, uh, self-imposed, uh, changes were probably not gonna make any difference. But that's on them. The requirements that we have feel that they will make a difference. And we will grant them a business license if they follow all those conditions.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it, Russ.
Yeah, I can tell you guys that I was not expecting them to walk in. When they walked in, I was expecting just the exact opposite. And when they came in and handed this piece of paper and it had, look, those here, we're trying to get different clientele, blah, 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 blah. And just, Chief and Jessica, we looked at each other and, okay, thank you.
So at your ultimately reviews, do we have, at that point, do we have the right to revoke their business license?
I think we, uh, I think a business license is at the pleasure of the city clerk by city code. And I think we can revoke it anytime. And I think we will be monitoring them very closely once we issue that business license with conditions. And I assume that Ms. Jessica and I will be in close, uh, conversation if need be. We can suspend or revoke their business license, the city clerk by code.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
That was good. Very positive. Full day to positive, sir.
Like I said, it was a good exercise to find out, you know, it just goes, not getting a business license in the city would not happen now. We would have a record because everything's done through a computer and everything's done through the state. So, you know, the days of paper trail are over as far as business licenses, so. That's a plus. We, we, you know, we recognize that we need to do better and we're doing it, so.
Thank you, Chief. Start with my report, let's talk about meetings that I've attended. On March twenty-ninth, I attended the Sound Cities Association annual meet and greet. It was nice to, because the last couple of years I've been attending meetings and it's all been on the internet and it was nice to win and meet people and shake their hand and get to know each other, make some friends. It was, it was a very pleasant experience. Guest speaker that night was Al Cosine and he went over the same thing that he's been going over. Going to DC all day. Yeah, there were some good things. March thirty-first, I attended the Chamber Con, Chamber Conference Ordinary Connect Spotlight Dinner. One of the reasons I wanna bring this up is, I was talking to Chief this morning because I know that we have some local businesses that have done, you know, tips and bear paint and have always supported. We were talking about maybe some, have a local award. Not particularly the Blue Area Award, but maybe we come up with a different award for, for our local businesses. Because I know at the Spotlight Dinner, there was, uh, ten different categories. I don't need, we don't need to go ten different categories, but if we can at least spotlight our, our different businesses and let their businesses know that we care and that we appreciate everything they do, I think that'd be a good idea, so. Any thoughts that you guys might have? I think I had a name, you know, a name of an award for, you know, that. Chamber calls, Chamber Congress calls it Area Connect. Anyway, food for thought. I'll keep some notes and talk about it in the next meeting. Affordable housing lease coming up in May. I think I sent an email out to everybody. And hopefully I sent out the, I don't remember if I did, but there was a template for a proclamation. And if you guys think that, uh, that's a good idea to make that proclamation, then I'd like to go ahead and make the proclamation and get it back to this, back to King County. Do you have any questions about that, or?
Yeah, I had a note about that. I was gonna ask if you were gonna do that, so I'm on board with that.
Okay. Tim, Chris, and Bill, everybody's on board with that, same. And then the last thing, I sent out an email about the upcoming pick meeting, SC pick meeting on Wednesday. That is a, uh, meeting that could either be attended, uh, in person or online. And, uh, I don't know who might be able to attend it online. I'd have somebody be able to attend that, because I'm gonna be in Mesa, Arizona this week. They will not be able to attend. It's from seven to nine on this day. No? I certainly will try, yes. I, I would appreciate it. I just don't, I've been going to these meetings and I wanna be consistent with the city because we were so inconsistent for the last two years. And it's nice, since I do roll call, playing that game of say here. You don't have to make a speech or anything else, so then you're first, always first when you get to the roll call, so.
Slip out the back half.
Yeah, slip out the back. Because they do get along. But they have been interesting too. I sent you guys the agendas, so. Still looking for opinions on that. And that's all I have to say, you know?
Mr. Ray, Mr. C, clerk?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I don't really have good news, so. Uh, the website, I guess we have a new rep that I'm working with. And I think we got lost in the jungle because I don't think the website, they don't even have a date for me yet. So it's bad timing, because we just had our first meeting for the agenda setting module that goes with it. And we won't even have a website ready for when it's ready to go, so. I'm hoping May, but like I said, I don't have a date yet, so I'll keep you posted. Oh, and then tomorrow we have a demo for a new financial system. We've had quite a few issues with the current one that we have. And we're just ready to move on from it. It's outdated and we'd like to get a cloud-based version. So we, Russ and I sat in one, weren't fans of it. And so tomorrow we have another one. And what's great about it is it also has a law enforcement side. So if we can somehow get a package for law enforcement records and the city side, work on that works out. And then in May, the local grants opens up, but the state, oh my gosh, what are they called?
Archives.
Archives, thank you. Uh, they do the annual local grant program, the records, and they have a system update grant for thirty thousand dollars, so hoping to put into that.
Yeah, quick question. Um, code enforcement. Do you have a program figured out for that, or is that part of the law enforcement? Or is that an Excel spreadsheet?
I think it would be part of this new system.
Yeah, so the way code enforcement handles now, it does go in our records management system. We draw a case report, and when we open up a code enforcement case, we draw a case report now. So it's generated, and then any documentation, like a citation or a supplemental report, all is logged under that case.
Any other questions?
Oh, you're good, you're good.
Any participation, the city council encourages public participation during meetings in the city council, and welcome your comments. This time is set aside for you to speak to the city council on any issue. The council ordinarily takes non-agenda matters under advisement before taking action. You're also invited to comment on action items as they are considered during the meeting. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes, each addressing the city council. Addressing the council, please speak here clearly and audibly, and state your name and address from the record.
Chris Gomez, five twenty-seven H Street. I just have one question for Russ. Has anybody reported that there's a, two large rises on First Avenue just before you get to Washington, just before going eastbound? It seems to be they're getting higher. I don't know if it's just me, but it seems like one of them is leading to a manhole cover on the opposite side of the street, and there's a crack there that seems to be coming to a peak.
That's a utility crossing, so.
Is that what it is?
Is that on First?
I described it right here, one draining the other.
Yeah, one's about, probably fifteen, twenty feet, and that's, the first one's kind of being really hot, that's just kind of.
I was gonna ask Russ about that later, but. I mean, if you have a stiff suspension truck, it's a.
Well, I've just been trying to avoid my, my, now, you know.
Ten mile out of this road, fifteen mile out of this road, it's a. See some swimming light.
I just, I thought that something's forcing it up.
It's a, that's a wonder, but I, either the ground is settling or the utilities are floating.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anything online?
Well, I didn't think that was.
Items, discussion items. Uh, item A is the Blue Line Comp Plan Agreement.
Okay, so, uh, as you know, Blue Line's been working on a comprehensive plan. They're current, they, they've been operating without a contract doing so. We feel the need that it's better to, instead of just having an ongoing relationship with them, to do contracts for specific things. So they prepared a proposal, and before we enter into an agreement with them, what the scope of work is, what they'll be doing for us, and, um, that is what you have in front of you. This is first touch.
And the total amount for the project is a hundred and sixty-two thousand. We do, and that's over three years, so twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four. This year, where they're slated to do sixty-two thousand, and that is funded through the Grove New Engineering Act grant.
So it's a pass. So the hundred, so sixty-two is from a grant, and the rest is from previous funds.
I think we had the GMA grant last year too. I think it's a recurring grant that you can put in for.
So no cost to us?
At least, there's always a cost.
No monetary cost?
It's no one sixty-two, so that's always good.
So, uh, Blue Line, are they eager to get to the top of this?
Yes, so we, we've had a little bit of a, and I'll, I'll just be candid, it comes to Jesus me with them. We, what I will say is the person now in charge of the planning division has attended just about every meeting with us. You definitely notice a more sense of urgency and more dedication. He was very candid with me about, uh, challenges. And he is, by all appearances, to me and the staff, appears, and he appears to be addressing those challenges. So, uh, I'm all about second chances. I think they're making strides in the right direction. I would also point out, they were just bought out by another firm. So, uh, I would know, I would probably see a little bit more organization come with that and a little bit more dedication, so.
I also noticed at the planning commission meetings, they're very thorough. They show up, they, they know what they're talking about. It's not, you know, they're able to stay on subject. Much improved situation. Any other questions on I M A?
Again, this is first touch.
I have a, first touch for water system plan, correct?
Yeah. Stacy actually presented on this back in January, but we were waiting for Department of Health Commerce.
It'll be a second touch?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I have a question. Am I interrupting you, man? Water facility inventory form, what's that?
It's, uh, kind of a list of like how many services we have within the city. Uh, some of it's pipe size, uh, water main site, yeah, or services and, and stuff like that is what it is. Some of it is, uh, our water use, uh, also our water loss and stuff like that, so.
And so that, is that what W U E and W S P is?
Water Use Efficiency is, that's a program that we submitted that we have to decrease our, our water use, you know, throughout the city and stuff. By a percentage, we would, ideally, we wanna be below a ten percent of water loss, and that's pretty much addressed throughout the nation is a ten percent. So I think we're just slightly above that, but we're not too bad.
And then what's W S P?
That's a water system plan.
Water system plan, yeah. Great, thank you, Russ.
Quick question, Russ. Our hybrids, is that general funders have water utility?
What's that?
Our hybrids, is that general funders have water utility?
Um, I think it's about water utility.
Any other questions or comments on, uh, I O C is the right-of-way lease agreement in King County?
So they were supposed to get back to me Thursday Friday last week, and I never heard anything back, so there's nothing to really give you an update on, or something, so I'm thinking about the letter.
One I D, ordinance number one, one-two-one-nine-dash-twenty-three sidewalks in loopies.
Alright, so we've talked about this at a previous council meeting. What you now have in front of you is the actual ordinance. What we would tell you is there's a pair. What we would tell you is there's a paragraph missing. And what is that paragraph again, Russ?
It's a transfer of property, so we need some way to do a bill of sale or something. The same thing you do with the utility, your water lines, or we want to transfer the property of the sidewalk and asphalt to the city of Algonquin.
So we're just missing that section of what you have in front of you. That will be on the second touch. We've sent it back to Zach, but we wanted to get our first version out in front of you because we've been promising it for a couple of council meetings, so. Again, we're going to consider this first touch, since this is the first time you're actually seeing the ordinance.
So that's the bill of sale then?
Yeah, that's what we need to put is a bill of sale in for, for the end of it. Yeah.
Any questions or comments? Item E, resolution twelve fifty-five dash twenty-three, catalog meeting, community center advisory board, this is your second touch.
This is actually the third, but we left it as a discussion item, just because we added the information sheet as well as the resolution. We haven't had this in front of council yet. We haven't really changed anything to talk about, it's just now ready. So if you would like, you can afford to pass it, it's, it's up to council. So yeah, if there's any questions, just let me know.
If we pass that, how is that, how are we going to choose the members for that committee?
I believe we would treat it like we do with the employee commission, where we'd ask for applicants, and then the mayor would choose from those applicants, and then.
So like on the left page, and mailers, and employees, and all those kind of tools we have? It wouldn't be like cards to everybody, like you do for a council, just open it?
No, that, that's very costly, so I'd rather try the other options.
Is this saving you that I would actually appoint, the mayor appoints?
I believe so. Appointments to the board shall be made by the mayor, subject to approval. This is planning permission.
So you guys are moving forward, this is like a motion that we need to move it from item E down to.
For T I, next meeting.
That's you.
Next meeting? Might do it next meeting?
That's the next meeting, that's right.
Okay.
We would prefer next meeting, give you guys a week to review, or a couple of weeks to review it, and come up with good questions. We're in no hurry, we just wanted to make sure we, you saw we had problems.
Any other questions? City and Public Business, Hall Business would be item A. The Washington Warren Air Local Agreement.
Yeah, I believe this will be your third touch also on this agreement.
And if you've noticed in the water system plan, one of the recommendations of D O H was that we belong to this Warren system. And again, we've, we've discussed it several times, so if you have any questions, feel free to give us a shout.
And don't forget at the bottom, it puts the recommended action.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the execution of the Warren Agreement. Second.
There's been a motion made to approve the execution of the Warren Agreement. Is there any questions?
I have a motion and second, thank you.
No questions? Hall favor say aye?
Aye.
Post a day?
Pass.
So we're, we're sure you're going to go out, maybe ask the board to put out to the public?
Or is it just for us, or is it?
It's just for you, yeah.
Item twelve, ordinance resolutions, ordinance number twelve eighteen dash twenty-three, sewer rate increase.
The one thing we do need to agree on is the effective date for the ordinance. Staff would recommend June first to allow time to get it out to the public, get the notice out. But it's up to council, whatever you want with this affecting.
I make a motion to approve ordinance one-two-one-eight dash twenty-three, will be effective date of six, one, two, zero, two. I'll second.
Have a motion and second to approve ordinance number one-two-one-eight dash two-three. Hall favor say aye?
Aye.
Post a day? Pass. Any other, anything else for the good word?
Is there anything you would like at your next workshop? If you've noticed, we changed our council rules, so they, our guidance, our policies, you, our workshop will be scheduled each council meeting. Is there anything the council would like to have as a presentation?
So I will say the housing action plan will be at the workshop, so I'll have to go in here to get the background. But anyways.
We don't have anything available last, either, can we reach out to you?
Yep.
Yeah, we do have the agenda setting meeting the Monday before, so by next Monday.
I know there was some interest in looking at the parks recreation side of, redoing playgrounds and things like that. Entertain.
Okay.
Over the next two months.
Jessica, can you also add review of a potential city jubilee celebration of private guest residents?
Sweet.
Anything else? Meeting stands adjourned.